Good evening. I'd like to call the order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simmsberry Planning Commission and to thank Ken and S A T V for filming. And I'd like Rich Cordes to serve for Kevin today.
Sure.
First order of business is application fifteen dash oh one of Robert Messier Pearson Esquire for K and K Developers, Inc., agent Infinity Four LLC owners requesting subdivision of the property located at thirty-four Hop Meadow Street, map E eighteen, block one one seven, block double oh one, to create three lots, zone pad, received three ten two thousand and fifteen, and the decision must be rendered by five fourteen this year.
Good evening. I happen to be the only applicant on the agenda, so we won't be here till midnight, too bad. So as you may recall, I'm Chris Prero from Plus L'Neale, representing the applicant. A number of months ago, we went through a process here in Simmsberry changing the site to a pad, P A D, zone, and as part of that application process, a fairly detailed master plan and evaluation by all the boards and commissions in Simmsberry was required. This board, obviously, we've met with you two or three times to iron out a number of issues that we hope we were successful doing. So we're here on a fairly simple matter this evening with respect to, I think, planning boards requirement, statutory requirement, and that is as the approver of a subdivision of land. So as we presented to you during the pad application process, currently, we have two pieces of land, a southern piece and a northern piece. What we intend to do, as we intended to do as part of that original presentation and application for the zone change, is we tend to construct the residential component of the overall master plan first, which we are doing, and in order to do that, we were going to, we suggested then and we're verifying and vetting now, that this southern piece be divided into three separate parcels. The, again, the property lines, this is the original plan, this is the original property lines that were drawn up to suggest where that subdivision of land might be as part of that process. So residential component down here, by default, since Garden Homes will own that accessway in fee simple, that by default creates two additional lots, which means we have a three lot subdivision. And we're here tonight in front of the planning board to get, gain approval for that three lot subdivision. Now, as part of the process, during the zone change application, we talked about a lot of things, many of probably are which, of which are not necessarily germane to tonight's application. We talked about open space and the percentage of open space that we were providing, thirty-nine percent across the entire site, and the pad application is clear that it does look at the entire site. It doesn't look at a single project within that entire site. So this subdivision of land is not necessarily the single action upon which this entire pad program gets built out. There'll be additional actions. There'll be additional site plan approvals. There's potentially another subdivision of land at some point in time. So this is the first of, we hope, to be a number of actions, and again, we're seeking subdivision approval. So, not to belabor the point, but the lines are literally within a tenth of an acre of what we had assumed, where we assumed we were going to be during the master plan process. We hit, pretty much hit it on the mark, and we've done enough engineering now of this site plan to understand that it's real, it works, it works like we designed it in the master plan phase, and therefore, there isn't really substantive changes to the property lines associated, you know, which we're proposing now and what we proposed to you as part of the master plan process. And lastly, to keep this brief, this is basically the, the base of the engineered plan. So again, it's almost identical to what we designed as part of that master plan. And that's really, I think, the level of detail I need to get into unless you have additional questions.
So the traffic information, obviously, was just on the residential component?
The traffic information?
The traffic, the, the...
That was, that was reviewed as part of the zone change application?
Well, it was submitted with the stuff we got tonight, so the traffic information is just the residential part.
I believe so.
And that, that has to be submitted...
That's close to O S A.
Anytime there's more than twenty-five living, so that's, that's your...
No, the threshold is much greater than that, but it's two hundred apartments.
Well, I thought I read my regulations that it was twenty-five.
No.
I was pretty sure about that. So until there's some kind of application for the commercial portion of this, we don't know about traffic. We'll never...
No, we do, to the extent that we have submitted a complete traffic study on the entire proposal of that...
And that included the...
Yes.
That's where my question right would be.
Chris, the open space percentage you quoted, is that just for the southern portion you're talking about and not the northern?
It's, the thirty-nine percent is for the entire sixty acres.
How much of that is in the southern and what's in the northern?
Again, our previous site plans identified a lot of that. We can achieve without finding the numbers. Now, depending on how you define open space, which you can define open space a lot of different ways, the way we defined it, these three parcels would total open space. So parcel one A, one B, one C is three, that's seven, is about ten, about ten acres, which would exceed the twenty percent that's required, if you were to break it down, which I'm not sure that's possible here.
And as open space, we're considering everything between the buildings?
Well, that thirty-nine percent considers open space that is usable by the public.
So you're talking about the space in between buildings, residential buildings there?
Yeah, could be.
That's not what I consider open space.
Hart, do you have any comments?
No, it's pretty straightforward, certainly. It's the same, same plan essentially, as Chris said, it's the same plan that we saw through the P A D. This is only for one part of it. We do expect that sometime in the future, we will see applications for the front part as well, but there is a portion of the open space that's shown for the entire property as part of this subdivision that's shown there as well, as was the same, same was originally shown as well.
I just, I just actually found some data, too, that hopefully will ease your mind. So on the, excuse me, on the twenty-three or so acres that we have here, the twenty percent is achieved with basically this, 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 and this, nothing between the others.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a comment, Chris. A lot of the P A D related applications that we see tend to concentrate on the residential portion of the, of the application. And from what I can see here, it looks like the first phase of the development will be the residential.
Correct.
Are there any plans to see some commercial development in the near future? We, I mean, we have the property owner's attorney here, he might, might not want to speak to that. We haven't heard any specific interest in that property, but we might not be the right source for that information anyway. We did testify, as part of the, in our marketing focus, testified as part of the pad application that we call this sort of a catalyst project, so you've got multiple uses, you need something to get over the inertia, and this potentially, hundred eighty-one units gets over that inertia, and we all think it will help the chances of that, those front pieces greatly.
For the record, T J Donnie, who I represent, Mark Greenberg, Infinity Four LLC, who's the owner of the sixty acres, which is the entire subject of the pad. We are actively in discussions with real estate professionals about uses that might go there, and there have been many identified, but we don't feel that we'll have anything locked in or start until, until the garden homes permits are locked in tight, which you're doing now, which will be done within six weeks from now. Then we'll have final, final permits for that, and we believe that some people will rely on that and maybe move forward with some stuff. It's a great spot, we're on TV, we'd love to have anybody's interest in it.
That's your free advertising.
With the P A D, if the market, nothing happens on the north portion, could that considerably turn to residential, or when you go for a P A D, it's a higher up question?
No, it's really locked in.
It has to be what's, what we're being told to.
It's locked in to what was previously approved by the commission. Any changes to that would come back to the commission, not only this commission, but also the zoning commission as well, any change in those uses.
Okay.
I guess you answered my question. I'm just looking at the traffic study that was submitted with this, and my look at it looks to me like it only applies to the residential component.
Okay. But the traffic study that we submitted as part of pad applies to the entire P A D. And it makes sense that that traffic study looks at this residential component only because when it goes to O S A, that's the traffic study that will go to O S A, O S A is going to evaluate any additional offsite impacts and improvements predicated on what being built. So each time something gets developed, they're going to have to submit an aug, an augment or submit a new traffic study that basically gets compounded on the S D, on the O S A certificate.
Compounded.
In other words, you will have this, the next, then you have this, it's added to it, then you have that, and it gets added to it.
Any other questions, Chris?
Yeah, I, you say essentially the same, we're talking about the master plan, what have you changed, you know, going line for line? I mean, have you changed anything in the master plan that we approved before, or, you know, have we tweaked a building or two?
Yeah, 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 at that level, we have, definitely. We tweaked little parking areas, we sort of made these a little bit bigger, we made the walkways so that they relate more to the front door. Before, they were really just shapes of open space, we didn't know what they were going to be, but it's literally that level of detail. We have the same number of parking spaces, we've added some garages, or, well, actually, no, we had carports before, so that's the level of detail that we've changed very, very minimal.
I think they were, they were relocated, Chris, correctly, from, they were relocated from where they were before.
Okay.
To the, that was something we talked about before.
So push the, are they carports or garages?
They're actually garages.
There are garages now, and we, we approved carports before.
Okay. And we relocated in some of them based on staff comments, correctly.
And they're all still rentals?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Looks like you lost a building on the, my left hand side, where you did the little parking thing.
Uh, where?
Right there.
Okay, this, again, predicated on some staff comments and through the, through the commission process, this was a series of these. Basically, the recommendation was, we'll get rid of those there, just put another two-story, smaller building there, and could have that as the only townhouse area. And we reconfigured this a little bit, I think it might have been four smaller buildings before, now it's three. But the roof heights haven't changed, you know, we locked into that, that view shed analysis, and we're still sticking with all of that.
You guys, you want like, a motion?
Nope, can't do it.
Can't do it?
Yep.
You two, you've heard everything you need to hear tonight. Until the Wetland Safety Acts, this commission will not be able to act, so we don't know exactly when that will happen, but we're hoping at their next meeting, they'll take it up and hopefully act. And as soon as they do, we'll be back here with a draft motion for you to consider and at your next meeting, hopefully.
Thank you very much. Okay, good. Take care.
I think we sent it out electronically, but I don't know if you, you want a little thicker copy to look at?
This is pretty beautiful. Do they want to take these?
I'll just type over the table.
I got about forty minutes.
This, this chairman and commission meeting, this is, you know, six ninety Hop Meadow Street, the, the Anson House property, which was recently approved by the zoning commission for development, in basically two parts. This particular property, as you know, has an existing vintage building on it, the former Webster Bank property, former church property, former presidential property, been there a long time, obviously, an important piece to the, to the south end of the town center. The second part of the, the rear portion of the property has proposed building for fourteen units in one of the buildings and seventeen units in the other. Those are new buildings, and the construction obviously will be different than it will be for the rehabilitation of the existing Webster, former Webster Bank building. What the applicant is proposing to do, and this sort of, this is not a subdivision, what the applicant is proposing to do is simply draw a property line that you see on the map that I just gave you, to essentially divide the project into two parts. Because they're two very different parts and two sort of very different skills and two very different financing packages, the applicant came in a while ago and said, you know, we need to do this in order to get this project moving forward. So this map was drawn by the surveyor and submitted, it does in fact, we did an analysis of it, it does in fact meet all the requirements for the town center code area for each of the lots. One of the things that I, well, there are a lot of things about this that I think are important, but one of the things I think is really important is that the, the front lawn that has been basically preserved as part of this proposal is proposed to remain that way as well. There's nothing proposed there, it's essentially remained front lawn, and that's important. But we did discover not long ago that there is sort of already an easement on that, actually, that was done some time ago, to, to remain as front house, so that'll stay exactly as it's shown on this plan. So the only thing I'm here to do tonight is to try to explain that to you, answer whatever questions you might have. The, the owner of the property is here as well, he has other questions that I can't answer, so I'm happy to do that. But is it kind of, is this a lot split, not a subdivision, first time it's been cut in many, many, many years when people, when it was created? And so that's basically it, and any questions, I'm happy to answer whatever questions you might have.
What's the difference between a lot split and a subdivision?
Subdivision is actually division of property into three parcels, and those have, they're under the jurisdiction of the planning commission. A lot split is the first cut to the property, where the property is divided into one, two parcels, and an applicant, an owner of a property is entitled to do that one time without coming to the commission for approval. They thought it would be a good idea because this is the first significant piece of property that's been developed in town center to just kind of let the commission know what's happening and why, and to try to answer whatever questions you might have with regard to it. Pretty straightforward, but again, when I first saw it, I, I had some questions, and we sat down, I think, for probably about ninety minutes or so, and talked a little bit about the different types of, of skills that are involved in each of these projects, one sort of a restoration of an existing landmark structure, and the other, new construction, which is totally different. So they'll probably be done by two different individuals, two different firms, with different sets of expertise, but the way the lines have been drawn allows them to sort of function on their own and function individually, although I'm sure that the cross easements between the properties will allow people to drive in the driveway and park where they need to park without any problems from other folks.
So non-subdivision means no open sp, nothing, nothing to do with open space, or they have all these statutes?
The, the P A D was originally approved for the property, and the conservation commission was pretty adamant about development within a certain, certain area of the steep slopes to the south, there's a wetland property there. The open space that's proposed is, in the proposed area, will stay as open space, and the applicant, and the owner could, could address that if they like. It's the front lawn, and it's scheduled to stay that way. I did see some sketches at one time, which had a, sort of a, one of the, the rear property come out to Hop Meadow Street, which I think was a good idea for a lot of reasons. One is, the indication there is that sometime in the future, ten, twenty, thirty, fifty years down the road, somebody might want to put a driveway in from Hop Meadow to the rear of that property rather than go around Drake Hill and go down that way. So this way, it's divided, that the lawn will remain as open space, essentially as it is. They talked about the possibility of putting some, some gardens in there or a fountain or something, but something totally compatible with what's there currently now, but it does not include any direct access to Hop Meadow Street, which I thought was a good idea.
Can we talk about underground parking for the seventeen unit building?
Not underground parking, it's in the building, it's, it's under the building.
Yeah.
But not underground.
Okay. But that's where they're coming up with the extra parking spaces?
It's like one west street.
Yes, in a way, yeah, yeah.
Hey, just out of curiosity, then, they, how far back, the proposed fourteen units are back, does that go back as far as where they used to be E V garages, or is it further up?
No, there's a wall there. There's actually a fairly high wall, six eight feet, maybe more in some cases, and it goes back to there, that's as far as it'll go.
Has this always been proposed as an L-shaped building? It seems to me, I saw something earlier where there was some space between the two buildings, was that because of the wetlands?
There, no, that's exactly right, Alan. What happened was that the, the number of units changed, and the buildings were reconfigured based upon the fact that they had to pull back from the wetlands. Wetland agency was very adamant about the fact that they didn't want that end of the building any closer to the wetlands than it was, than is proposed here. And so when the building was pulled back, they changed the end, the Hop Meadow end of the configuration, did two things. One is it sort of softened that look from Hop Meadow Street, and you may recall that from looking at some of the photo simulations, that when the landscaping is in, you almost can't see that end of the building, but it was pulled back and sort of reconfigured in that way. And when they did that, they did in fact bring the two buildings closer together. There is technically a, a closed separation, a closed stair between the two buildings, you see, and so that would allow people to get from the upper level down the stair to the dumpster area in the back, you know, to go to, to their, they could in fact go to the rear of, of the building, whether they were going to go to somebody else's garage or a different portion of the property, or walk down the driveway or whatever, but, but that stair will allow communication between the upper and the lower levels.
Still, though, it's kind of a closed system, which is the way it is.
Yeah, well, it's covered, you know, in a way, and so when you get, winter and stairs get covered with snow, it's probably safer to have it covered than not covered.
You said the number of units, I'm sorry. The change should go up or down?
There were, ultimately, there were three units added, and the zoning commission looked at that and asked questions about that, as I agree, you looked at it as well, asked questions about it. What it did allow was for an increased amount of covered parking in the back of that building, as you come around that, the lower level, there's covered parking in that area, that area was open before, so when the building was brought back in that direction, correcting if I'm wrong, but I think that what happened, there were probably about six additional parking spaces created, allowed to be created back there when the building sort of slid to the rear slightly.
So basically, we're talking like a parking garage underneath, a massive parking garage, not individual, I mean, there'll be numbered for each individual unit, but it will be basically an open garage area underneath.
Yeah, Jake, you want to try?
I can only assume that's considering the access in is one way, so it has to be for everyone, a parking garage to get in and out of there.
I think it's, it's wide enough for two in, in that...
Yeah, you know, the topography goes from west to east, so it slopes off toward the railroad tracks down there. So basically, we're using that grade or a little lower than what's there, and we're going to build the garages, and then hopefully, it's a cut and fill, it'll balance site, and we'll pile the rest of it on to make it at grade so you can walk in your unit.
Correct. So underneath the building will be basically a parking garage.
Yeah, yeah.
And it'll be open to the backside, no doubt?
Yes.
Toward the wetlands or toward that back, east, south slope?
Yeah, toward the, yeah, the east side, the railroad tracks.
Mm-hmm. Toward the active deer trail, actually.
Yes.
So it doesn't get wet when down there on the E V property.
I was there, it was a six-point buck walking through there.
Will both units have that parking arrangement?
No, the, the, the south building will have a little bit of underbuilding parking on the east side.
The south side will have the underneath, the east side will have individual garages from what it looks like here on the, on the, on the drive. If you're facing the wall, that's the exterior.
The east building has the underbuilding, south building will just have a little bit on the east side, just to, I have to show you the...
In the drive.
In the southeast corner. Yes. This is all the parking. And these are individual garages. So if you're oriented just like this?
This is the east.
Right, so this will all be underbuilding?
Yes, in the middle.
We'll have a little bit under here.
This isn't good?
No, 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 not all the way, just a little portion right there.
You're going to get all these people parking here?
No.
Where are they going to park?
There's no garages.
Okay, yeah, all this is surface parking, we've got garages right here.
What about for these people, where do they park?
Not, not everybody is going to get a garage. Everybody's going to walk to Fitzgerald's and...
So only this is parking right here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I was assuming that this, all, everything underneath there would be parked?
Yeah, just, there's, there's grand trees right here, and there's roots, and we're afraid of disrupting that.
Just out of curiosity, I had a question about, it's not our, sorry, just the cosmetics of the outside of the building, how it matches the house, just my being curious.
It will, it will complement, but it will not look the same, and that was really the direction from Julie Carmichael, represents state and federal tax credits.
Oh, for the historic?
They, they do not want it to look like it had been there forever.
Not going to let you use fake brown stuff?
Well, we're going to have, we'll have a little bit of that, some accents to complement them, but it's primarily, the exterior will be the cementitious board and shingle roofs, whereas the mansion is entirely redstone.
So they'd rather have it complement but different?
They, they don't want it to look like, they don't want it detract from this being the iconic building, and frankly, we don't either, so we're...
What's the height compared to the existing building? How, how high are the new units, are they lower than, because of the grade?
Yeah, the people end up being lower.
Townhouses, uptown?
The townhouses will be, right.
And they're all townhouses?
Well, the lower levels are flats, first level is, are flats, and then we have two-story townhomes above that.
How many stories are we talking about here?
It's two and a half story.
Two and a half story, three stories?
Yeah, two and a half, just like the existing building. I think that's all that co-inlog was, two and a half. We initially had three, but we had to throttle it back.
Iron, this is just a discussion, not a formal application?
Yeah, this is just a discussion, and actual discussion is just on the lot split.
So we can't move again?
There's a...
I think we have an interested buyer, looking, looking, keep asking your question.
Could you explain to me the benefit of doing the lot split?
Well, there's a, first of all, if we don't, ship bow weighs in on what the design of the new build will be. Secondly, it's probably different skill sets, one is going to, one group of contractors is going to be more, more inclined for a historical restoration, and some contracts we talked to don't want to touch the mansion, they want to do the new build.
But what does the lot line have to do with that?
It's going to be separate contracts, it's going to be separate financing, and it'll be separate investors.
Okay. So that's the point.
Same owner, though?
Same owner, yeah. For the timing? Anyone can sell a lot.
Yeah, and if B, if parcel B, let's call it the new build, if that becomes condominium based on demand, then at some point, the condominium association will be the owner of that property, but the front lawn and the mansion will be preserved.
Basically, it's all about finance.
Yeah.
And future management.
And practice, and construction management.
Yeah.
Because of the, the uniqueness of a historic rehab versus a new build.
Any other comments?
Break a leg, it's exciting for downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things that I wanted to bring to the commission's attention under updates and status of ongoing matters. I just gave you a copy of the CIP plan program, which the Board of Selectment Engineering Department is referring to you for your consideration. There is no formal language yet, but what we wanted to do is get this to you so you had an idea of what it was. As soon as the formal, you know, the bond council's language is prepared, we'll get that to you for your consideration. But what I wanted to do was, at least tonight, to get this in your hands, make sure that you had an opportunity to look at it before you were being asked to vote on that language. And if you have any questions after this evening, before you actually have to vote on it, if you have any questions about that, feel free to send them to me. I will either ask the finance department or the town engineer and get answers for your questions. That's basically what the CIP discussion was.
In years past, we had these broken down within a five-year plan. This last page shows that all this is predicated on the 2015, 2016 cycle. So they want to accomplish all these pieces during this year?
I think that the, uh, the way it was explained to me is that these items would be in the 15, 16 year, that's correct. There are other items which, as you said, Mark, would be broken out subsequent to that. And I can, I'll get you the, the complete document, so you'll have that for your reference.
So this is essentially different than what we received when, when the capital improvement presentation. Uh, there's, there's stuff in it, but it's changed quite a bit. Because I'm seeing stuff in here that I don't think we discussed.
This, well, and that's a really good point, Bob. I think, and if there are things here, and I will get you the complete thing from the town engineer next day or two and get that out to you so you have a chance to take a look at it. My understanding is that, I think last night, the Board of Selectment finished up their approval of the budget, so that they were actually going to meet before us tonight in this room, but they canceled that meeting because they finished up last night. So I assume that they at least have organized into their discussion so far, some of these things, and I'll get you that information before next meeting too.
This is just a summary. The presentations detailed enough so we can quite understand.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. And just like I said, I just got this this afternoon, so frankly, I don't, I don't have a lot of more information other than that either, but I do want you to see it. So if, like I said, if you do have questions on it, please send them in and I'll get answers for you as quickly as possible. The other thing I wanted to mention too, as I sort of just referred to it, is that previously we had talked about our budget. So thank you for coming to the budget meetings. They're always a thrill for me, I just really think this time of year, I'd much rather do planning than budgeting. But I think that what's happened is that we figured out, the Board of Selectment's figured out how to fund the major WETOC study that we've been talking about trying to finish for a couple of years. And I believe that if that program is funded, that we'll have some really exciting things to work on in the next nine months with regard to...
So it did get funded?
That's my discussion so far. Now, what could happen to the board finance, when the board finance gets a hold of it, who knows? They may decide that it's not appropriate. We do think it's important. And if we're ever serious about getting these village districts together and coordinated, we think that's the next project that needs to be done. That, that could be really, really exciting for that, that portion of town. So we will continue to work on getting that in and hopefully fund it, I think that's important. We're seeing a couple of other applications coming in for, we have our first workforce housing overlay zone application come in for some property up near the skating center in the north end. It hasn't, it's actually not a formal application yet, but they came in and talked informally to zoning commission about that. That is in fact a zone change, so you'll see it before it goes back to zoning. So as soon as it comes in, that'll be referred to you. So that's kind of an interesting thing. That's our first workforce housing overlay zone application under our new regulation of, of a year or two ago. So twenty percent of the housing in that particular development would be workforce housing. It used to be called affordable, but it's workforce housing now because it's not quite the affordable level, it's a little higher. Well, it has to do with the towns area median income, it's based on that. So people like schoolteachers and firefighters and regular folks can afford to live there as well. Eighty percent of those units will be market rate units. In this particular situation, it's kind of an interesting thing, and you'll see it again, again, before the zoning commission sees it, is that it's a combination of different types of housing. So some single family, some townhouses, some, I think there's one apartment building.
How many units do you have?
I don't know yet, I don't know yet. That, that particular regulation allows up to twenty units per acre and it's nowhere near that, nowhere near that.
How many acres?
A big piece of property, it's probably fifty acres.
Five hundred units?
No, no, it's, it's really not. Like, it's really much smaller. I'd probably say it's probably under a hundred, hundred or under. It's, it's relatively small piece, not really dense. So, you still have, as you know, sitting in the north end, the Meadowwood development, which is originally six hundred and forty-four units.
Three hundred is what we...
Two ninety-nine is where it got down to, yeah. And that actually came back to exactly what the original property was owned for, one per acre.
No, it's just, once again, we've just, okay, in the last year, over a thousand, almost a thousand units, yeah, it's like we're adding more, it's like...
Well, there's a, there's a lot of things to take into account. One is the fact that they're not all going up here tomorrow. They're probably three to five years built out in any one of these projects. And the, there's also a significant contribution that the market's going to play in the whole thing. So each other project is going to be looked at individually. I'm sure that the financing institutions are going to take a look at them, look at their market studies and look at their, you know, how they're set up. So I don't think that any of these projects are going to be built if there's absolutely no market, there's just no question about that. So let's see what happens. But we do have definite need for, we're still subject to A-3G, which was what Meadowwood came in under. And as long as we're subject to that, if people want to come in and build housing, which we can help them, get them in the right location, help them with design, the mix of units, those kinds of things. Whereas in the Meadowwood application, we had zero input into that, zero. So there's a, you know, do we, do we, is it the best thing that we would all want? As long as that P-3G is still in place, we really need to say, can we provide a small amount of affordable housing and help these projects move forward? One of the things that was mentioned earlier this evening by the former applicant is that, and they feel strongly about this too, and I've talked to their marketing people about it, they feel strongly that those front parcels are actually going to begin to develop once some of the housing is built. When there are people there to buy stuff, when there are feet on the street, when there are people that, that want services, we're hopeful that some young professionals obviously will continue to come back to town. We think it's important that they do. One of the other things that we're seeing now too, and you'll see an application, or maybe it's just a zoning application, but there is an application coming in the next month or so for a small office building. There's a lot of, of call out there for small spaces, relatively small spaces, not big huge buildings anymore. And so what we're starting to see is a, a couple of people are thinking about, can we build a five thousand square foot office building or a seven thousand square foot office building and get some smaller businesses in those buildings? So we're starting to see some of that as well. And the reason we're starting to see some of that is they think that there's going to be people around that can inhabit those, that would rather work here rather than go to West Hartford or to Hartford or East Hartford. So we're hopeful that that trend will continue as well. We feel comfortable that it will. But I think, you know, I have a lot of faith in the market and how the market's going to function, so a thousand units are not going to appear tomorrow, we're just not, I don't think that's going to happen that way.
Dorset Crossing springing up all at once.
It is, it is. And that's a bit of a, I guess it's a bit of an unusual project. I think when we look at the Powder Forest, PAD, that Land Works is doing, they were very specific about the fact that they're going to do that incrementally as well. The Dorset Crossing piece, that's a hundred and sixty-eight units total. Some people think it's nice, they've seen it so far, other people think it's, it's too much in, in that area. We'll just have to see how they make out with their... I think that, my sense is that the people that, that would, that would look to rent these in that particular area, probably going to be working more toward the Dayhill Road area, kind of the north end of town, toward the airport perhaps, something like that. Fifteen or twenty minutes to the airport and then come back to, to that area, that might be something that they find desirable. I think that's what they're probably finding now. I think that they had started, they wanted to get into their first building in March. I think the snow has really slowed them down. And so I think it's probably going to be April or May before they actually get into their first building. But it'll be interesting to see how that goes as well. That'll be the sort of the, the canary in the coal mine for that particular project.
Speaking of Dorset Crossing, did the plans change from that original application that came in even after Culbrow or Griffin Land decided not to play ball with them? It seemed to me that the configuration of what was supposed to happen there has changed drastically. All of those townhouses that they're building back there were supposed to be like that mid-range. You were going to have the front section, which was going to be commercial, right up by the road. And then directly behind that was supposed to be townhouses. And then farther back were going to be individual larger homes. That doesn't look like what I see there now. I see a giant apartment complex out in the back. Now, did they change the plans from the original one that was given to us?
They changed the plan probably about three times.
Agreed.
Yeah. I think in the back, it was originally, if you remember, there were a, a road, a long road, that access way that went to...
And it's split off in two directions.
Well, there was a road that went underneath the power lines, if you recall?
Yeah, well, that was...
Obviously, Walcott, the first application they came in with had a roadway out to a series of single-family dwellings underneath the power lines. Ultimately, their marketing people said, we don't really think that's such a good idea. So ultimately, that whole section of property, I think there's approximately twenty acres or nineteen point something acres, maybe?
That's where they put that special needs.
Became open space, okay? That was open space. Next to that is the forty-eight unit specialty housing for folks with MS. Eight of those units on the bottom level or eight units somewhere in the building are reserved for local people with special needs, not just people with MS. So there'll be a combination of, of uses in there that some folks, forty of those folks would have, in order to qualify to live there, would need to be afflicted with MS in some particular way. So the MS housing is, is back there, obviously around that cul- that rotary, that roundabout that we, with that. The other, the east point is called, that Dorset Crossing, is the apartment building that's there, there's no question. There are two other lots that are actually behind that, behind those apartment buildings, and those we don't have any plans for yet. Ultimately, that road will go through there, back around that roundabout, through there and through the Griffin Land property and come out over on Hoskins ultimately.
I guess to rephrase the question. When we approve a set of plans and that Mylar supposedly signed off on, are there changes allowed to happen?
There were changes in the site plan that happened, but there was nothing, in other words, portions that were originally residential are still residential. The commercial portion toward the road where the walk-in center is, is still commercial. There's still other office buildings that can go on those parcels.
Yes, right.
The portion that you referred to before about Griffin Land owned that, I think it was about ten acres in the front there as you go in Dorset Crossing Drive on the left.
They wanted to go create the intersection directly across from Walcott. They wanted to have that as a four-way intersection and that was a right way that somehow they weren't going to play ball and so they had to move it down the street as their entrance was.
That's their driveway essentially, that's Dorset Crossing Drive, but that roadway will connect ultimately to that roundabout that was constructed.
Right.
Did a nice, really nice job on that, actually. And that road would go out and connect to that four-way intersection that you're talking about.
I guess the point is, is that I just remember the original plan that came in front of us really doesn't look anything like what's being constructed there now. And I'm wondering if that, my imagination, or has there been a ability to change plans?
Yeah, about three times, I think we did.
No, that was because you had to change, you know, there was a...
Well, there was a land swap and, you know, I'm trying to...
Right. But there was, there was... But the configuration wasn't, in my minds, wasn't the same as we have right now, I, you know?
It hasn't, it hasn't changed enough for that part, it's just not done yet. That's, you know, that's, that's my take.
But it can't happen without, I guess that's what I'm driving at.
To come back here.
They can't change the layout, in other words, this one block in front of us right here, they can't change this layout once it's approved, this layout has to stay this way.
That's right. The lot lines that you just approved...
Not just the lot lines, but building locations, things like that, they can't change...
Building locations are site plan issues, those go to the zoning commission. Subdivisions and lot lines and original PAD approval come from the planning commission. The zoning commission's jurisdiction has to do with site plans, this commission doesn't deal with site plans.
Okay, so then that means they do have flexibility in changing the location of these buildings. They've showed us these drawings tonight. They actually can change those after we have passed our approval on, after the fact. They can then change the configuration of what we just saw.
Yeah, we've had this discussion a bunch of times and there are some things that, as I told you, and I think I remember talking to Alan about it, there are certain things that I would be really, really strong about. The commission was really, really strong about heights of buildings, for example. Changing a residential building to a commercial building would not happen, would not happen, okay? Lot lines, of course, would not happen because that's another jurisdiction as well. But there are specific things that you noted in your approval that are not going to change because we were concerned about views to the, to the ridge, to the tower and all that. Those are things that are immutable, they aren't going to change unless you change your mind on that. But if somebody moved a building ten feet or not, that's a...
Commercial to residential and vice versa?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But if they, if they wanted to change those things, those uses, that would come back here, no question about that. But typical site plan issues, like I said, you know, that circular parking lot, moving a building or consolidating a building from three to one, that's site plan stuff.
Well, I'm not talking about small as-builds, I'm talking, you know, as-build things where they're a couple of feet out one way or the other. That's not what I'm looking at, I'm looking at, you know, serious, like Dorset Crossing, serious relocation of old buildings, you know, five hundred feet, six hundred feet farther back than they were originally.
Well, again, it's, you know, building relocation, again, is a site plan issue, it's not, it's not really, in that case, you know, we were pretty specific about how the lot lines would be laid out. Matter of fact, the PAD, once it was approved, this, that's been back, gosh, in front of Open Space Committee, Conservation Commission. This commission has seen a recent point three six acres and then behind that specialty housing is going to be heated to the open space. Remember, we talked about that and approved that. So that's the only change that's going, that's going to go back, Board of Selectment acted on it last night, I think, or at their last meeting, I'm not sure which, yeah. They did approve that as well. It's going back to the zoning commission for that final approval. That's not going to change where any of the buildings are located or where any of the construction is located, it's simply going to take point three six acres and transfer that from the private owner to the town open space. So that's, that's a really small change, but to them it was important. That's the kind of change that's, we went through five commissions to do a point three six acre change. Depends on the, the nature of the type of it. But if you have any questions about, you know, what got approved and what's there, feel free to come in. We're, we're anxious to see some of the structural structure coming in as well, but we can't, we can't force you to do it.
Can I ask a question, a quick, on subdivision regulations?
Sure.
I looked through that today and am I right that if it's being subdivided for residential use, that there is a threshold of twenty-five living units and which requires a traffic report, which can be waived?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a threshold for commercial development that requires, for our purposes under subdivisions?
For any, for any, we talked, remember we talked a, a great deal about commercial subdivisions, we had a big, long discussion about that. And I don't think there's a specific requirement, Alan, I would tell you this though...
For traffic?
Yeah, for traffic. I would say this though, that anything that's substantial with regard to either a number of buildings or any kind of substantial trafficking, but we would ask them for some traffic.
Target.
No.
Well, according to what we're looking at here, so...
Well, again, they, they did that initially for the, the whole thing initially, so they did it. So this is, is not a change in the number of units. If it was a big increase in the number of units, number one, it would have been back through the whole PAD process, but number two, we would have asked them for much more detailed traffic information as well.
Interesting, there's no threshold for commercial, how you define that?
Yeah, well, it's tough, and we talked about that a lot, you know, when we did the regs, the regs, the subdivision regs, and we came up with the fact that, you know, we're gonna have to put, if you folks wanna see it, for example, if it came in as a subdivision with a, with a big commercial component to what you wanted to see a traffic report, and for some reason, we didn't ask for it, which I would tell you that we would ask for it, then we certainly could get that.
Wasn't the biggest building here like 25,000 square feet, the commercial, when that originally came in?
Yeah, well, I think they talked at one time, they talked about Trader Joe's, or Whole Foods, or something like that, and that's probably, you know, in the 45,000 square foot vicinity, but that's not really pinned down exactly yet. What we would look at is, is it close to what they originally proposed in terms of the setback, in terms of the size that was proposed? I think you just scaled it out, I think it's about 45, 43 to 45,000 square feet.
They're marketing it as potential uses, and I think it's what I saw as 39,000, which is where we're talking to.
Could well be. I think that what happens when you get, you know, much, much beyond that area is it tends to become a market significant impact, and we were probably asking for traffic on that, something like that.
Big Y open yet?
Not quite yet.
Not quite yet?
I talked to somebody about that today, actually. My understanding is, as soon as the snow goes away, they're gonna start clearing. I hope that's still the case. They can only tell you what I'm told, and I believe that's gonna be the case. People are starting to talk about the rest of that property, what's gonna happen there, and it goes down to Sunrise, to the Sunrise Market there on the corner. And so there are a couple other buildings that are there now, and I hope that, that old house that's there is restored, somehow reused, refurbished, repurposed, whatever, that could be something, a number of different things. There's also some discussion about what could happen to Sunrise in terms of how that building could be made to look a bit better as well, upgrading that and structures, so that could be significantly improved. We don't have any specific plans for that yet, but we're hopeful. But again, I think that once the, the big Y goes, that goes in there, big Y is interested because they're obviously have a number of apartment dwellers behind them that will be customers as well, so they're very anxious to get that moving as well. So, you know, it's, it's a synergistic thing, that we're hoping will go all fit together, one piece at a time.
Still no nothing besides what we heard tonight with the town center.
There are some things that they don't have formal plans for yet that will be kind of interesting.
People are asking?
Yes, oh, definitely asking, no question about that. We talked to people, talked to three different people about the DOT parking lots. I've talked to some people about, I think there's no secret that we're talking to the Sims Croft people about their particular property as well. Sims Croft has come to the zoning commission for an informal presentation to relocate their facility up to AD Walker Road next to Fona. And so their, their construction are out of the center of town up to, to that area, should that rezon be successful. And that's a rezon that you'll see, and as soon as, as soon as they submit as well. They had an informal discussion with the zoning commission with regard to, would this be acceptable? One of the things that's really important in a situation like that is whether Fona is a very sophisticated, precision, high-tech made to factor, would really want these things next door in terms of the smoke, and the dust, and the vibration, and so on. And the, the various owners have talked to each other, and they've, they've worked out whatever issues they may have had, and they're willing to live with each other. Whether that ultimately will be approved by the zoning commission, I can't say, but it looks pretty good at this point.
I saw this morning Mike Gerard's plan, it was over the weekend, with the office completely hides the industrial part behind it. It's the kind of neat.
Yeah, see, it's kind of interesting, you know, Mike has, would move his office up there as well, that's right, as well as the equipment, so that also then, you know, he has his office on, you know, up by high school right now, so what happens to that? So that could be either repurposed into another office building, or, you know, really, I mean, that could almost be a residence, the way it looks, so that's, you know, could well be. Somebody wants to live next to the high school, pro or con, you know, if you have a lot of kids in school, you can walk to school, that's fine. If not, and if you don't like kids, you probably wouldn't buy that house. So who knows what's gonna happen there? But, so lots of moving parts anyway, and so we'll see what's happening.
The, one question, if I heard correctly last night, when they were discussing the DOT site, did I hear that the, the way I heard it, the DOT would not allow a prospective purchaser to do a contamination examination of the property?
That's correct.
Do they have to buy it with sight unseen, such as?
Yes, yeah.
Why would they, why would they not do that?
They, they don't allow testing on their property, they just don't allow.
Just in case they're.
Who's property? The state property. It's our property! Our property, yeah, you're right. We can, we can get it for $0.
There's a, probably, I, I think, and I talked to Jeff Jay about this too, probably a number of different ways that we could determine whether there's any issues close by, you know, a property that's on the perimeter of it, we either have connections to it, or we either own the property that's on the perimeter of that, so we could do some, some testing on that as well. But at this point in time, I was at a meeting with DOT, we asked them to permission to test, and they said, no, no question, no discussion, as a matter of fact, just said no.
Just say you didn't have $80,000.
Well, of course, that's the first question, it's not gonna, well, no, it's the first question somebody's gonna ask, you know, is it clean or not? And we, we don't, we don't have a clear answer to that question.
I think so.
Could. So we need to figure out ways to do that, and, you know, they think in the old days, they had.
People mooring.
Exactly. Didn't they used to steal oil from that guy over there, Paul Weeden?
But that's all I got.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll do a minute, Mr. Drake, I'm sure that's got him out of the way. January 13th, 2015, a deletions change to page one.
Line 10, a small typo, I think it should be a comma after prel.
On page two? Page six? Anybody here in motion on accepting of the minutes? So moved? Seconded? Anyone?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention? Myself. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a business? Do we have another motion from somebody?
Move to a chair.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from